Well, good morning and welcome this morning to the Education Board of Education meeting. Real call please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington.
Here.
Mrs. Downs. Mrs. Eubank.
Here.
Ms. Lammert.
Here.
Mr. Pullman.
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. Perrysburg Schools welcomes you online and also those in attendance today. We welcome you to the Commodore Building and we thank you for attending this morning's Board of Education session. We care about the safety of our students, our staff, families, and our guests. Please note there are Essex behind you and behind us while we're seating up here. And we are at 140 East Indiana. In case of emergency, AED is located just outside the cafeteria doors. Again, thank you for attending this morning's meeting. At this time, I will request a motion to adopt the proposed agenda. So moved.
Second. All right.
Real call please, Mrs. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Ms. Lammert.
Yes.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes. Motion's passed. Good morning, Mrs. Downs.
I'm just started.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. We just got started. We just got started. Okay, we're going to turn over now to the Superintendent's report. Mr. Hostler?
Hi, Mr. Pullman. Thank you. Today, I wanted to go over, just to provide a COVID update with the board. And we have a presentation here and to make it a little bit easier for us, we wanted to just be able to scroll through the presentation. I recorded audio ahead of time and then be able to take questions afterwards. So if you have a question during it, the audio will continue to play and I'll be happy to answer questions afterwards. So I thought it would be easier to manage the presentation that way. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Schaper, who hopefully will begin the presentation.
No pressure.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Tom Hostler. Good morning. Wanted to provide an update on COVID in the district and some recommendations about next steps for us as we move forward. So first, I wanted to begin with some changes in the community. In the last three weeks, we've seen more community spread of COVID in our Perrysburg area in the 43551 zip code. Actually, about a 65% increase according to the Wood County Health Department. We're now leading the area in active cases in Wood County. And much of the activity has really spiked since Halloween. And we've seen an increase throughout Wood County, about 46%. And I know there's a lot of anxiety over what may happen after Thanksgiving. Well, the county report, the most recent is November 25th. And we have 191 to 195 cases in the 43551 zip code. That is the most in Wood County. If we, just two weeks ago, we were at 131 to 135 active cases. And went back to the beginning of the month, we were sitting with 66 to 70. So you can see how this progression has really accelerated. Again, as I mentioned, since Halloween, the county has seen a spike in our community, our schools. We've seen that also reflected with the number of cases for students and also for staff. Since the 19th, those numbers have increased significantly. Since our last meeting, the governor issued a curfew and is continuing to demand different steps of us to help fight the spread. The Lucas County Health Department, which we're in Wood County, Lucas County, obviously, there's many connections between our residents in Perrysburg and those in Lucas County. From athletics to families to jobs to commerce, all those things are important. So we do pay attention to what happens in Lucas County since we're so directly connected to many things there. But they ordered all schools or all grades in seven through 12 to go remote until after the first of the year. And then allow for face-to-face in grades K through six if possible. They also ordered OHSAA high school junior high sports suspended until after the first of the year. And in Perrysburg, we have suspended all building access to outside groups, including junior jackets, through December 8th and we'll be taking a look at whether or not that we keep that suspension in place. For pop-up testing, there was a site at Perrysburg High School Saturday. Before it began, there were over 100 cars lined up. And the report is that we had 811 cars go through and test administered. I believe they were hoping for 500, so a lot of interest in getting tests. Before Thanksgiving, this was what our weekly tracing looked like. We're updating the tracing with the buildings and they were closed to face-to-face learning. So this was a full week and you can see the numbers that week of COVID tracing leading up to Thanksgiving. You can see here the numbers obviously somewhat decreased because students weren't in. So the real feel estimate for us, and this is that two-week snapshot, going back to our last two full weeks, the 13th and 14th week of school. You can see that out due to COVID, either being positive quarantined or exhibiting symptoms, waiting to get the all-clear. We had, in the two-week period, 839 students that were out of school, which is about 15% of our population related to COVID. For staff, that number is about 10%, 10 and 1/2%. So, you know, we look at the week-to-week changes, but again, when you're off for 10 days, if you're isolating a minimum, or 14 days if you're quarantined. So every positive that is carryover and really is built upon what happens in the following week. Here is our actual cases and you can see that it's trending in the wrong direction. Certainly increases in the number of cases we've seen in the last few weeks eclipse what we saw at the beginning of the year when things were the worst as we began the year. Quarantines obviously continue to be a significant challenge and disruptor for learning. I'll move through the building individual results. So this is preschool. You can see obviously not much activity there, which is great. Small population at Woodland. Again, this past, the 14th, we had three students test positive, 34 students quarantined. And then prior to that, you can see very few numbers of students actually positive for COVID. But if you have one student test positive in a classroom, that could take out the whole classroom. And if they're on a bus, you could see one positive case had a significant impact on quarantines. And I think Woodland is an example of that. Toth numbers are, you know, haven't seen a lot of students in that building. Frank, you know, you can see a couple of weeks where there was a number of, two cases resulting in 56. That's been the high watermark in Week 7. Since that time, we've only had, you know, one, you know, the last three weeks going into Thanksgiving, zero, one, and one students positive for COVID. At Fort Megs, again, some challenges with staff. But as we've gotten into Thanksgiving, it looks like we're more there. At HPI, obviously, Week 13, we saw a spike. We had to close the building due to not being able to, for coverage. You can see that Week 14, we did go remote. We still continued to have some challenges with staffing. And we're hoping that the two weeks here, you know, we begin to see things there. The junior high numbers, clearly, things were moving very, very well throughout junior high. We made the adjustment to face-to-face with all students. And, you know, that Week 13, it looked like that was holding up very well. And just the nature of the virus, in Week 14, we went from two on the 13th with everybody back for the first time to the next week with 13 positive for COVID. So just that short period of time. The high school, which is in the hybrid, again, two weeks of 10 and 10 students positive, but you can see the acceleration of the number that had to be quarantined. We talk about flexibility and looking at from where we were on the 19th of October and the trend, you know, things from August to October were going in the right direction. And then what happened at the November 15th? And then, of course, you know, just in that short period of time, what changes? And then, of course, with the number of cases, you can see here, we went from 26 to 30 on October 15th, where we stand today with 191 to 195 active cases in the code. So you can see what that looks like. And really, what we're seeing in some of our buildings is a reflection of what's happening out there. And that's a concern. So that takes us to conversation about moving forward. Our goal was to return all students back to the original hybrid plans that we began the year with, with the two and a half weeks of school remaining before the winter break. However, based on what we're seeing and the incidents and the number of cases that are still being reported, we'd like to make some changes to that. So at the junior high, what we'd like to do is at December 8th, instead of the students returning in the hybrid, we'd ask that they stay full remote to finish the semester. And then the decision about the four-day-a-week return, we just pause that until January, a discussion, that is. At the high school, we're asking for the same thing, to keep the high school full remote learning until the end of the semester. And again, let's just pause any conversations about bringing, you know, more students back at this time. Clearly, with the things that we're experiencing, that doesn't make any sense to have that conversation at the high school where they're in hybrid and at the junior high, just with the volume we're seeing. At HPI, what we'd like to do is, and this one is something that we struggled with, but we'd like to remain in full remote to finish the semester there. That is a building where just by the number of students and staff that have been impacted, we saw that it could be very disruptive to families to have to shut down school in the middle of the week for a day or two or three. So with the seven instructional days that we have left, we think as difficult as this is, the impact that it may have on families, we think it'll be less disruptive to have the students finish with remote learning, while remote learning. And, you know, let's hope that we have better numbers in January and get those students back in face-to-face. But at this time, we want to recommend bringing HPI, you know, keep them at the remote level versus bringing them in. You can see here at HPI, or the preschool in Woodland, at the elementaries, we want to continue to monitor what's happening there. And you can see here that with the numbers that we're seeing are somewhat stable in the elementary levels. And when I say stable, I mean, we're, you know, for example, we're looking at Frank's numbers here. You know, the Week 14, we had one student test positive. On the 13th, we had one student in the building test positive. So we're seeing that. And those one positives obviously generate quarantines. But we're not seeing that kind of an increase like we're seeing in some of the other buildings, like the high school, for example. And then Fort Megs and then HPI. And you can see a little more activity at HPI that's causing us to make this recommendation. So the metrics, again, just bringing it back to where we are. You know, there isn't that one kind of, you know, what is the number that will cause us to do this or that? But when you look at the number of cases per 100,000 in the zip code, we're certainly creeping up to that area with more, you know, more restrictions. The mitigation strategies, the, you know, consistent use of masks, everyone's doing a great job, social distancing to the largest possible, hand hygiene. With the volume that we've been getting, it's been very difficult for us to keep up with contact tracing. And that makes it more challenging to make sure that we're doing all that we can to keep students who may be positive outside the building and not disrupt the learning process. We've struggled with that, frankly, before the weeks that have happened. We've added additional staff, you know, temporary staff member to help with that contact tracing so we can keep up. But this is a concern of ours and one of the reasons why we're making the recommendations to stay remote. We can't keep up and that is putting kids in classrooms where we know they might be exhibiting symptoms and we haven't gotten to them yet. And we work closely with the Health Department and they are allowing us to do this because they can't keep up as well. Maintaining staff for the building, this has been an issue in a couple of our buildings, as folks know. We know that we were red and a warning for purple. We don't know what the numbers will show in the next week or two, but there is a chance that we could be moving in Wood County from red to purple here in the next couple of weeks. And then in-school spread, student to student, I can't say that it's trending stable anymore. We've seen some cases small, but we've seen more cases and incidents of students only contact, you know, is with somebody in school in a classroom setting. So that is a concern. So when you begin to look at these and where they are occurring in the secondary level, that's really leading us to make this recommendation. So I appreciate allowing me to share this information with you. And at this time, I'll open it up to any questions that folks may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hostler. Board members, any questions?
Do we know how many in-school people are spreading COVID?
Did you hear that, Tom?
How many in-student spread to spread? I don't have an exact number. I know that primarily at the secondary level, we've seen, you know, we've had cases where an individual, their only exposure is somebody that's in their classroom. So we've had cases of those. I have to get back to you on what that number is. That is a data point we have broken out, but we do monitor that, so I can retrieve that.
Great, thank you.
A couple of things. I thought the presentation was, again, full of data. And I'm wondering. I'm wondering with respect to after Christmas break. I know we have taken this week for remote. Is there any consideration of the January 5th through 8th? That's the first week back, that we'd stay remote for that week? With the same idea that we've taken this week, that folks are traveling amongst family and friends and what have you? What do you think about that, Mr. Hostler?
I think, I think that makes a lot of sense. Excuse me. We know that we are going to see, you know, based on what the health and epidemiologists are saying, that we're going to see an increase after Thanksgiving. It is likely to assume that that surge will kind of roll into the holidays, perhaps another surge. So I think at our next board meeting, we'd like to maybe address that. That gives us another week or two of getting a feel for what's happening in the community, what's happening in the zip codes, and equally important, what's happening in our buildings. And I think at that point in time, I think, Mr. Pullman, that would be a good, I think, an appropriate conversation to have. I do want to share that we are concerned about the elementaries over these next, I think we have seven instructional days. I think we have seven instructional days between now and the end of the, you know, the semester going into winter break. You know, so we're, we're, you know, we're thinking about the next semester, but I also know, I want folks to know that we're also focusing on, you know, those buildings. And, you know, we have to be flexible, that's been a theme all semester, and, and we're going to be watching those numbers in the elementaries very carefully. But our goal is to try to get through, have that conversation at our, our next board meeting about coming back in January and giving parents ample time to plan. And I think that makes a lot of sense for us.
Thank you, Mr. Hostler. Board members, any other questions or comments?
I, I have a couple. First of all, St. Luke's is almost at capacity with COVID cases. I think they have 63 currently. So I think it is a really scary time out there. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of the plan. The one thing that this, all, this whole thing has, has shown me is how valuable in-person class time is for all children. And I think we didn't appreciate it. All those years when we just rolled along and we had 180 days and every once in a while we'd have a snow day. We did not appreciate the luxury of having all children in the school at the same time. In my perfect world, and I know this is just in my perfect world, it's not a proposal, but I would love to see us just shut down completely. No in-person, or no virtual, nothing. Shut down totally until the middle of December, of January, and extend the school year, are you ready, till June 30th? That's what I would love to see happen. I can't imagine our first graders getting an entire month of real in-person learning. It just, I, I would love to see that. I know that is just a pipe dream of mine, so don't, I don't need a motion. But, but I think it's something worth thinking about, perhaps talking to the staff about, seeing if that is, is something that could make a, an impact for the future of our children. I just worry so about kids missing. Right now, they're missing, well, spring quarter, three quarters of a year are gone out of our students' lives of in-person learning. That's, that, that's really hard. If it ends up being a year and a half, I, I can't imagine what our, what our end scores are by the time these children graduate from high school. Some of them will make up that gap, some of them will be lost forever. So it, it does worry me, and I know it worries our, our staff. I don't know, I, I know our teachers are dedicated and, and are giving it their very best shot. I appreciate their, their hard work tremendously, but I do think it's worth thought. That's the end of my...
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hostler with respect to the presentation?
Yeah, I, Tom, I actually am confused. Why are some schools able to pull this off and others aren't? I don't understand what the variable is that, that went wonky for us that still other schools are in session. Like James was telling me before we came in, that, you know, we're closed right now, but we still had to send buses out to the Christian schools in Lucas County. Well, why? Not why are we sending kids to those schools, but why are they able to run and we aren't? I'm not sure I understand...
They're private.
What, what, what's, what's breaking here that other schools aren't breaking?
Did you get that?
Yeah, that, that, yeah, I did. Thank you. Ms. Larmour, that's a, that's a good question. And I think, I think part of it is, I think, you know, we have to identify, you know, what schools are, are we taking a look at? Because if it is a private, let's say it's a private elementary school, for example, that we're busing students to, and then you take a look at our elementary schools, and, you know, the data that we just shared, where, you know, over a month period, there might be one or two cases of COVID, I would argue that, that's probably online or on par with what those private schools are experiencing with that age population. And I think if you begin to move, you know, to the older students, you see just more transmission. And I think that really reflects what's happening in the community with the, the data of, you know, the testing, you know, which age group is now leading in terms of how many positives are, are there? So I, I don't think that it's a matter of how are they doing it and we're not. I think if you dig into, into that and say, okay, at this particular, you know, school, they're operating and perhaps, you know, it is their elementary, they're just an elementary standalone building. Well, what does our elementary standalone building look like? And we just showed you that data, which, you know, is, is low incidence of COVID so far, which we're grateful for. But when you get to a larger, you know, a larger setting like our high school, which is, you know, one of the, you know, probably the second-largest high school in northwest Ohio, you know, it gets a little more complicated, just have more bodies. So I, I don't think there's anything, any magic to how they're able to do it and, and we're not. I know a lot of people like to go there and say, but at the end of the day, you know, if you are a K-12 private school and you have a total of 400 students, you, you have small classes already, and, you know, you, you have the ability to spread the students out more, just like at our elementary level, things are going well there. So I, I don't think it's a matter of, you know, what is falling apart here versus maybe over there. I think you have to take a look at, okay, well, how many students are in that building? What are they serving? And, you know, and what, you know, how, how is it operating there? And I think when you begin to peel away that, I think it's, it's probably across all public and private schools, that elementary schools are less, less cases than, than high schools. And, and I think that bears out because that, what's happening in our building is a reflection of our community and what's happening in our community right now. And in Perryburg, we're seeing, you know, a well-documented uptick in, in cases. And, you know, it's, it's not unreasonable to say that if more parents and more older siblings are getting it, we're going to have more students getting it too and being exposed to it. So it's kind of where we are. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I think, I think probably we're very...
It, it does answer it, and in a very sad way, because I was hoping that that wasn't the answer. So it really is just a function of population, that we have such a large population in tight spaces that we have to deal with versus other schools. Is that basically the summary?
I, I think so.
Okay.
I think so, yeah.
I have one more question. I, I've been asked to ask this. On sports, why are we continuing to allow sports when we're not going to be allowing the kids in school? I get asked that question a lot, and I'm always conflicted on how to answer, because I find it contradictory to say we can't allow the children in person in school, but yet we're continuing to allow sports. And I bring this up because when you said they can't keep up with contact tracing, perhaps eliminating something that is perhaps allowing more people to get sick, like a, you know, sporting event, perhaps, maybe that would eliminate the, the continuous contact tracing.
Did you get that, Mr. Hostler?
I think so. So I think, I mean, that, that is a, that is a, it is a, it is a challenge for us to, to try to provide as, as normal of an experience for our students as we can. And that includes, you know, you know, we had band concerts last week where, you know, there was social distancing, and they did a tremendous job with, you know, allowing a concert to take place, but limiting, you know, significantly limiting the audience. You know, they, they had seats set away from the stage, and it, and so we're, we're trying to do those things. And athletics and concerts and those kind of normal experiences, we're, we're trying to offer those as long as we can, as long as they are available to us. Because we also know, and we learned from last spring, that there may be a time when those things aren't available to us. And I, I, you know, I think we're approaching that moment where, you know, I think on a regional scale or a league scale, I don't know if the state will step in and shut it down, but I know there is a growing concern about, you know, trying to, you know, offer those normal activities for kids, but yet, you know, limit that. So what we've done is we've limited the, the use of outside groups, like the junior jackets, you know, from, you know, using our facility because of the reasons that, that we just had talked about with, you know, the spread. We also have any, any teams that are conditioning that aren't in season. So normally, you have your, like right now, winter sports working out, and then you have the spring sports, you know, kids conditioning, and even in the fall, weightlifting for fall sports. We've eliminated all those things. So we've really begun to pare down and just offer what is available to us to offer at this time. And certainly, the board could make a decision to, to end that at any time. But right now, you know, we're trying to provide students, you know, as, as many opportunities as, as we can. And, and that includes, you know, music programs, the plays, and athletics. But certainly, I think it's, it's becoming more and more of a challenge.
Do we know, have we traced any COVID cases due to any of those events that you mentioned? The junior jackets or the concert?
So, so we've, we've had students, typically what happens is you have a student who is positive, and they're a member of, you know, the team or a part of the cast, and then that will result in other students having to quarantine. Or we've seen, you know, that they will pass it to another student, you know, in that setting. So that, that has, you know, that has happened. And that's similar to the same kinds of tracing that happens, you know, obviously in a classroom setting too.
Let's, let's get back with the presentation, because I have more questions like what Kelly had. So anything else, Mr. Hostler, about the presentation, about the school day changes? If not, going to have a motion to accept the presentation and the plan we have going forward?
So move.
Second? The first and the second to adopt what Mr. Hostler is proposing for the school day? Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Mrs. Harrington?
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Motion passes. Just a couple of comments. Mrs. Downs, I totally understand about the, take a timeout for about a month or so and just get this thing squared away. Those are the thoughts that many of us have probably have had. I think one thing about the education, though, I think we're getting something. It may not be the bar up here, but we're getting something. I'm looking today, anxious to hear how the Zoom classes are going to go at the junior high school and the high school with the bells. That'll be new and different, and the teachers have been working very hard to make this happen. I know that the Schoology with Kami now, they've got that extra, extra added edition with PDF files and not having to run copies and having to fax things over or send things by email, but it's automatically sent to the teacher who can grade it and send it back. So I think through this adversity, we've actually made some gains to at least maintain some level of information and some sort of education taking place. Is it where we need to be? Absolutely not. So I agree with you there. Face-to-face is the place that we need to be. All that being said, what credit, and a big thank you, I wish we could do more for our staff. Our teachers are, are just doing a tremendous job trying to keep up with this new technology and ways of presenting material to our students. Not only that, but in-school, out-of-school, hybrid, remote, all these different terms that we're using, it's kind of disrupting too, the students, the families, and the parents, and of course, the educators. But I'm sure for myself and from the board, we just thank them so much for what they are doing to keep this boat going in the right direction. At least we're moving forward, maybe take a couple of steps back and continue to move forward to get the kids the best we can get them. So that being said, is there any other discussion about this before we move forward? Mr. Hostler, anything else about this, this topic?
No, thank you.
Well, thank you. And at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I wanted to say one thing about the extracurricular too. Mrs. Eubank, just, again, my opinion with respect to the extracurricular activities, and as Mr. Hostler addressed it, obviously, the High High School Association and sometimes the governors pushing all back in the schools to make decisions. Superintendent and boards make the decision. And we're just trying to say, well, you guys make the decision, because you're the big guys running things. Some of the buy-in is the fact that if our kids aren't doing these extracurricular things, like, well, we can control them, or we can make sure you're following protocol, washing your hands, keeping a social distance, all those things that go along with the COVID, they're going to go out and do someplace be someplace with some club activity, boy scouts, girl scouts, dance lessons, what have you, and still going to bring it into our schools. So I guess one of the, the theories or philosophies that I've heard is, we'll keep them involved in our schools, since we know we can control that environment with activities as long as we can. Until someone says shut it down, or like Mr. Hostler said, our statistics and our board decides, Mr. Hostler says, you know what, enough's enough, we've got to shut her down in our school district, no extracurricular activities. That may be the next conversation, may be the next conversation. With that being said, we go to the consent agenda. You can see the items in front of you. Again, if you look at item number five, looking for the additional tutor, which I think the PVA is continuing to grow. It's not a perfect system yet, but we continue to add staff to help with that. And you look at the need for, you know, substitutes, and we've got a bill under 6.1 to look at. So it's, take a motion for the consent agenda. It'll be items number, what would that be, five through six?
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Motion passes. And we go down to item number seven for any type of new business or board discussion at this time.
I, I'd like to say one more thing about extracurriculars. We haven't done it in the past few years, but several years ago, we did trace, we did students who had zero extracurricular activities had a significantly lower GPA than students who did have extracurriculars. And the interesting thing is, it kept going up and up, your GPA. The more extracurriculars you had, the more success you had academically. The, the children who had four extracurriculars had by far and away the highest GPA. I, I think that speaks to the fact that none of us went to school to read Beowulf. We just didn't go. We went to school for other reasons, such as chatting with our friends, playing sports. I, I think it is a strong motivator for students, and I think the more you feel a sense of belonging to the school community, the harder you work to perform well in that community. But if you're not a part of it, you're just sitting at home all alone, looking at your screen, it's hard to feel that sense of community. So I think the extracurriculars, if we can do it, are important, but not to the point where our, our children are getting... where our, our children are getting sick. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out. I, I don't think any of you have seen that, that chart, and maybe next year after we're back in full session, and we all, and have, we'll do that survey again so that you can see the, the real value of the extracurriculars.
Thank you, Mrs. Downs.
Okay, if I could just add, I just want to make sure, it's not that I, I, I don't want those things, sports or extracurriculars. I want both. I want to be in school full-time and have the extracurriculars. I don't think it should be one or the other. I just was bringing that up, because I get asked that question, and somebody asked me to ask that question. So I don't want it to, people to think I...
No.
I just get asked that all the time, and the, the, you know, personal conflict, like I said, I do have with saying, yes, we can do this, but no, we can't do that. It's very important, very important to have those things. And, and, you know, as Ray mentioned, not everybody does extracurriculars in school. People do dance and do things outside of school, and being involved in school is very important, but they are getting it elsewhere.
Well, I just, I just mentioned those statistics, because I think when people say to me, I don't know why we have these extracurriculars now anyway. I think it's good to have more ammunition to answer.
Absolutely.
The value that we place on those. So that's the only reason. It wasn't a criticism of anything, it was simply information that...
Well, I think now people are asking, not the value of it, but why is it during a pandemic, when you can't physically come to the building and we can't educate the kids, these other things are continuing, if we are concerned about the risk and the health of the kids? So I was just pointing out, I see when people say that, well, yeah. I get that too.
I think, and I think the key word is extracurricular activities versus sports. They always want to tag the sports, but it's all encompassing.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
I did think it was interesting that the Lucas County Board of Health prohibited extracurriculars inside the buildings. And if you're aware, a lot of those schools in Lucas County are having extracurriculars in other buildings that are not their school buildings, but they're still doing... I, I just thought that was interesting.
Yes, it is. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to item number eight, and they'll need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of the employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of employee or an official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, license, or speed. Can I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. And we don't expect any action to take place after this, so at this time, we'll get set for an executive session. Thank you very much for being here.